I'm gonna enter that. Hold it for a while. How do I get to the video?
You wanna continue without the audio on this?
No, I won't put all the audio.
You gave each one on the phone?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want the audio on this or on something?
Yes.
Alright, six thirty, we're probably making an order, we'll start off with the lead. Place the second slide. On the day of this slide, what I'd like to leave just to be, which I guess is one state and here you have one community.
Everybody on this person. Dear Lord, we thank you this day for the much needed rain, for the special day, and pray that you give us open ears and open minds to make wise decisions for the community. Christ, I'm afraid.
One in the north hall.
Mayor, for your last one.
President.
Uh, Kim Williams. Eric Dunne.
President.
Uh, Cody Caper.
President.
William Rutledge.
President.
Brad Snowy.
President.
Charles Scarborough.
President.
Brett Hale.
President.
And Dean Hen.
Here.
And I'm Alex Sanders.
Okay, that leads to number five, also office.
Oh, okay, so, um, everyone except William Rutledge and. And repeat after me, and then you'll say your name and your place.
And then the right one?
Oh, right there, yes. Uh, I.
I.
May.
Corey Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Your office. Of the city of Lakeside City.
The city of Lakeside City.
And will do the best of my ability to preserve.
Do the best of my ability to preserve.
Protecting the city.
Protecting the city.
The constitution and the laws.
Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
The United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations, everybody. That leads to number six, citizens comments.
As of this moment, I've just got, Mr. Quick, Bill, if you'll step up to the podium. Okay, so, uh, last meeting that we had, we talked about the fence since then we've had rain, and then COVID, and I'm having trouble getting through a rock slab that's apparently in the line of the fence where it's going. And the people that I was hiring to have come out and dig it, break this slab, hasn't been able to come out because of COVID. But, uh, we've got some other things that we're trying to get done instead of that, feed those people, so we can get our fence put up. So, but we are working on trying to get the fence up, um, and that's what we stand on there. So, um, there's some other concerns I do got, I do have, uh, I think we moved four cars out of the front, and they're actually fixing to disappear. Um, they're glad I purchased some other land, and they're gonna buy some property out in the county, and, uh, that way I can get four cars out there. The rest of them are all customers' cars that are either waiting for money, or waiting for parts, or, uh, something along those lines. So, uh, and those are all being pushed off to the backside of the property, so try to help clean up the front side a little bit there. So hopefully, with some of the things that we've done, kind of pays more of the city and, uh, the citizens as well. All I've got.
I can put up every. Eric Dunne, citizens comments?
That is all I have for today.
I've got number seven, items of community interest. Do you want?
Yeah, uh, first thing, Lonnie Gare, chief sent a message, an email to me. He said for the fire department status update, it's been pretty quiet this month, a lot of people staying home, not calling 911 due to fear of COVID. Uh, this month, they've only had four EMS calls, um, and one fired. Uh, they also have a member looking into new equipment for the department, uh, and he attached a report. I will say some of the key things that's said at this time, I'm looking into our department applying for a total of seven grants, with $545,000. Um, some of the key points, request of a sit, a bunker to hear, uh, start the DFD down the path of a newer, more modern apparatus, uh, replacement of tender, uh, equipment requests to place, uh, a new pump, polytanking service, and request of money to receive training aid that will benefit the Lakeside, future Lakeside City firefighters, uh, with training aid. So, uh, a lot of good stuff on there. I also would like to say at this time, as far as the fire department is concerned, um, I am on there, but I'm not a voting member, I have no rights to vote. So, um, I know Cory's on there, maybe that's why he is, he too has no rights to vote, um, and I just wanted, uh, make it clear and put it on record that, um, working with Lonnie Gare as the new fire chief has been, um, very pleasing and easy, um, and I do support him and everything he's done. I've seen a lot of good things come from him and his leadership, so I do support that and appreciate him. That was the fire department. Uh, now for the city manager's update, um, Mr. Quick, I spoke, and so I think he just gave me an update, so hopefully there's, um, answered questions there. I know the fire department has a citywide garage sale scheduled right now for Saturday, June the sixth. Uh, we've had quite a few people already sign up, um, again, the cost is $5, and that gets you on the list for people, um, I want goodwill to come by the house and pick up, um, afterwards. Goodwill will come by and look, man, stuff they pick up, uh, by that weight is returned as a proceeds to the fire department at no cost. I know we have talked, Lonnie and I have, about maybe a possible Fourth of July, um, event of DFD with the interest of putting on in the park. I know we've been talking to a few more members and get some, uh, feedback from them. Prince of Reservoir, that's something that the city is part of, for the liquid salt revitalization program. Um, the executive director, Stuart Harvey, uh, turned in his letter of resignation for that, he did another job, uh, to Midland, and moved to Midland. And, um, after speaking with the chairman for the, um, David Coleman, for the reba-, uh, liquid salt check their friends, they are not gonna fill that position, um, and the chairman's gonna take on a more, uh, heavy workload. I know we did designate certain funds to them in a previous meeting, uh, for the compressed earth blocks, that he came in and did a presentation on, and by the end of this month, they should have an update on that, a scheduled time that they're gonna come in, and all that. New building update, I see, I know y'all noticed the concrete has been poured, um, and I'm pretty sure they had passed inspection on the concrete, the building got delivered, and so it will be very soon that you'll start seeing part of the structure get put up and, um, going along with that. Uh, bear with me, cause I got quite a few updates. I did post something on my social media, I know I've had quite a few comments about the golf carts, new status of that. Um, as you know, Congress passed the House Bill fifteen eighty-eight, which now makes all UTVs and golf carts must have insurance, uh, must be operated by a licensed driver, have a valid driver's license, and they gotta obey all traffic laws. Um, currently, you have to go to March County tax office, and they give you a plate for it, and it costs us $14.50. Um, as John noted back in twenty seventeen, actually. Yeah, twenty seventeen, y'all passed an ordinance requiring a golf cart registration, um, at a fee of $10, that is still in effect, I don't know if that's something I wanna look at and amending or resolution to keep it in, I would. Let me know if y'all wanna change that, there's now, the state takes care of all that. The other thing, Kevin wants today to get a load, um, asphalt, we've had a lot of potholes and road, whatever damages due to the rain and everything else, and so, um, we, I would strongly suggest us start looking into doing some serious road repair, um, just to get, so it doesn't get any worse. I mean, right now, we're just, I feel, just put money in it, I know in a certificate of obligation, I'll set funds aside for road repairs. Um, Laguna updates, uh, I wanna give Sam and Kevin a pat on the back, they have gone out there to Laguna One and made the repairs of the crossover line, I know for the longest, Laguna One was offline. As of May the twelfth, we have brought it back online, and they've done quite a few repairs themselves to the banks, uh, out there in their works, and so they've done quite a bit of progress out there, um, so. Kudos to them. Uh, last, oh, um, I know there's been some talk about the park over here on the east side, I just wanna clarify that as of today, y'all have not formally voted or done anything designating that as a park. I know there was talk of it, but it was only talk, and, um, so right now, there's nothing declared to be like Lakeside City's Park. I will say that the drainage is much better over there than what it currently, it used to be, um, I even talked with Mr. Storm, and he agreed with me that the drainage is better over there. We have brought in, all the dirt that we've brought in is, has been free, we haven't paid it down for it, and we do have a local contractor that reached out to me, and has a big job that he's doing June, and he too wants to, uh, bring in some dirt, it's good, still dirt, there's nothing wrong with it, and so, um, obviously, I'm gonna let Dean look at it, take it, make sure we've engineered it, okay, we should. Luckily enough, it's a more agree there. Another thing for the city manager update that I would like to bring up, currently, we do not have any ordinance requiring subject tank pumping, um, which is everybody in here except for the new addition, I wanna say Mariners Way, and Driftwood, uh, have subject tanks in their backyard, and we don't have any ordinance or thing regulating that those things have to be, uh, pumped. We can make the recommendations, there's nothing saying that you have to be pumped, and what we're experiencing is that a lot of people are not pumping them, and they're solid, they're getting full, and their solids are going over into our green tank, and causing a lot of more monies, costs, and stuff like that on repairs to the city side, and so I would encourage y'all to look into something and making a agenda out of it to create an ordinance for those things.
Will you put that on next, next agenda?
Yeah.
As well as the rock first.
Okay, and then that is currently all I have, which is the manager update.
Thank you. Brings number eight, consent agenda. Are you paying a motion, I wanna jury?
I'll make a motion, we'll improve, consent agenda.
Mr. Stanley makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second, discussion between council, falls in favor, say aye, opposed, say no, motion passes, brings us to item number nine, the revenue agenda. Be nine eight. Discussion consideration on COVID nineteen says, uh, they consider protocols.
Um, there's someone, y'all wanted to keep regular on here for the next few months, uh, I know that the government, the governor has extended his, um. Order, and currently it was extended until June the eleventh right now, um, so, other than that, much more of an update on it, I know yesterday he released the press conference, quite a few things go back to normal, and so, this is y'all's time to discuss.
So I know right now that the, uh, disc golf baskets have been put back out. Did we, did we put basketball rooms back up?
Basketball goals are about to.
Yeah, the only potentially closed is, uh, the pavilion area, um, this is kind of council, we wanna continue to do that, or the, the. Or, I think just that the, uh, maybe tables back out underneath the, there are not, there are two micro bottles, I've seen quite a few kids up there on these picnic tables, especially on a, on a high stage or whatever, so. Yeah, just kind of just, which, which I thought I'm opening the park back up, um, you know, it sets up to get this social distance, uh, again, there's really no way for us to regulate that with our situation and where we are, so I just wanted to kind of put that up there and see if the winds will go ahead and get everything back to normal after the park.
I don't think with everything open, I think we're around this, I think it's, they're trying to open it back up as needed.
I think it is tender open in sports camps and practices and everything else, we're using, so.
A lot of the.
The, the kids are open there.
D sports are open back up too.
Boys and girls clubs, everybody's open back up.
One thing I would ask right now, um, we've been keeping the bathrooms locked, just because, making the spread of COVID is a whole lot easier through bathrooms and all that, obviously, you know, everything that goes involved with that, do y'all just wanna continue to keep the bathrooms locked, closed, is this something y'all want to open them back up, um, currently, or?
Not, who are they? My, my only concern would be proper hand hygiene, in order to wash your hands if it's closed and you can't practice that. That would be my only concern, now would be for hand sanitizer stations out there, which, could go through a lot of them, but maybe that's a little bit looking.
I think the hand sanitizing, because even the kids, people getting up in the park, coming out, I was coming, and they're sitting on the rocks and everything else, so the bathrooms aren't available, but yeah, they have sanitizing.
Kind of looking to put in some.
Hand sanitizer up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just leave the bathrooms locked for a little while.
Okay.
Unless someone might say, okay.
Now, I will say this, I know it's currently very hard to find hand sanitizer, um, but we will look and try to do, because that's the fun, so, I just don't wanna make any promises that we'll get some, when I can do it.
We'll just keep the bathrooms locked, and we do have some that are open out there.
Yeah, and we kind of leave them unlocked for a little bit, and it got to be where kids were creating messes in there, it was, there was trash everywhere, and so it was more destruction than it was worth keeping it open, so.
Originally, it was planned to only be open for park use, if you rented it, it wasn't open for park use, just to cover the rest of the park. Everybody lives close enough that you're gonna, you can eat, you can go, and home.
I think the problem, yeah, and a lot of the problem is, is when you get to, when people bring, the views based on building, you have teams out there, and they need to go party, that was, that was the big concern, that's why we did keep people for a while, but, I, I think right now, it's safe to bring the state hand sanitizer stations, or they may go on any time.
Don't they know when they rent, or they reserve the fields, don't they get access to that?
Yeah, but, right now, nobody has fields preserved or anything like that, because of the.
But in the future.
Yeah, in the future.
You need a motion for that?
Uh, no, cause there's no action being taken.
Anybody else have anything on that, we'll move on? If not, we're at seven, I'm sorry, nine B, presentation scratching consideration of the focal development, I'm probably only between Lakeside City East and East Development and Lakeside City West Development.
Yes, I'm gonna let Mr. John Lee stall off, and Doug Martin, they reached out to me and, um, presented something to the council, so I, I received it, mayor, mayor approved this, we got it. So thank y'all for, it's coming to talk to y'all about this, I think, um, it sounds like it may be out as far as what we're trying to accomplish, um, and want to get y'all's backing on it and understanding of exactly what we're looking at, looking forward, as far as our question, y'all as well. But, um, so this is just a little fact, to give you a little bit of a higher level understanding of exactly what we're looking at doing, uh, what we're looking at is, obviously, right now, there's Lakeside City West, or Lakeside City East, and the land that's in between, or these Lakeside City Central, or whatever y'all would like it to be called, um, but what we're looking to do is to purchase it, develop it, and asking if y'all would like to add it, and then with some help, and do it, so. We are going to move forward developing it, with, with, either way that we have to, um, I just think it's a win-win for everybody, if it was, if it was considered. Um, and so, on that first, uh, the, the second page of this, it kind of has a little phase layout of exactly what we were initially thinking on, uh, how we would start the development, and we're good, we'd love y'all's feedback on it, but phase one, we'd start over there by the church and run down Edward Road, or Edward Way, and then we'd loop back around and start the first road into that new development. Uh, within that phase, it's forty-two residential lots and one commercial lot. I know it has been stated that they would like to have some more commercial opportunity in Lakeside, and so we built the little bracket on the seventy-nine front, places with that, um, bringing something like a dollar general, or something that the entire community can benefit from. Um, one thing on that phase one as well, is if you can see there, there's that pond that's right up front, and, you know, the initial layout just hasn't plotted out evenly as far as the lake, the lots, um, so we would actually be, be looking at donating those lots to the city, so you can make a community fishing pond or something like that, that's another thing to offer this. It, uh, the first one, like I said, it, it shows the forty-two, we know it's a, a lower number that we'd be developing at first because of those, uh, donations, and in doing so, we're asking for the help and paying for the sea paint and sewer and the water development, um, for the entire project, but phase one estimates would be around $200,000, is what it would need to be. It would be probably a two-year project for, for phase one, and the goal would be to accomplish each phase every couple of years, so it's something that would be requesting that y'all be able to put in budget, um, to be able to continually develop it and grow the city as well with us. The, uh. Phase two is thirty-eight lots, it would actually then introduce a road from seventy-nine into the heart of the development. It would be, um, be the smallest development part of it that we did, and it would also offer an opportunity to put some more of a grand signage or whatnot on that seventy-nine entrance, if the city would like to, you know, promote the city, cause as of right now, this is the only entrance, and it's kind of hidden back, and Lakeside is, it's one of those, in my opinion, living in the area, Lakeside is something that people are always proud of, you know, they, they're proud of being in Lakeside, so, something to have that grand, I think would be a really neat little group. Um, and it is, it's right there in the center of the two, so all three will be, be right there. Um, that phase would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars estimate cost. Phase three would be thirty-three residential lots, um, and this space right here, as you see, it's kind of right there in the center, you know, of, kind of the meat of it. Um, the nice thing with that is, there is, we're, we're starting to, to introduce the cul-de-sac side, um, one thing I know Lakeside loves as far as citizens, is that the slot lot through traffic. Um, so when we're looking at laying this plot out and trying to understand how we wanted to develop it, it was to not have a whole bunch of through ramps, it was to have those, you know, quaint little cul-de-sac areas, so the kids in that area would be able to get out and enjoy and have a good time. That one right there would be about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar estimate. Phase four would be fifty-one residential lots, and we would be, once again, doing more cul-de-sacs, it's three cul-de-sacs within that street, and we'd be expanding it all to the west side, um, it's the largest development in the project, which also comes in a little bit larger cost as far as the estimated funding request of about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Phase five, we do the final phase, there are about forty-eight residential lots, um, these would be some of the closest lots to having ac- access to the lake, um, there is also the, the flood plan of the, um, irrigation, what would we call it, little, yeah, the little pond right there. So, there would be some opportunity to possibly do some donating of, of land that they're looking to, like to look at doing some park, or doing some, some other unique project with some of that land as well.
It is an area that's too low for the elevation to, to bring too much filling, so, uh, we'd like to give that back somehow, so we can create some kind of community, uh, or something.
And so, you know, something that we want to address is, obviously, the concerns that everybody has, as well as, you know, making a benefit, and, you know, we, like, we were talking a little bit in the presentation of it, um, the ability to attach all of Lakeside together, so you don't have to actually get on seventy-nine or a road to enjoy the community as, as one, you, you can actually have it as a pathway. So, you can actually have a walking trail, or whatever it is that y'all may want, the golf carts, um. So you can actually have a walking trail or whatever it is that y'all may want, the golf carts, um, whatever type of situation, but you can see, see fit. One of the other concerns was, um, I know with the recent development is size of the lots, um, I know it's a, a big deal on people's heads and, you know, the, the Mariners Way development, seventy percent of these lots will be double that size. Some of them will even be larger than double, and then about twenty-five percent or so will be a little bit, uh, will, will be, I want to say was, the Mariners Way lots are six thousand square foot, our smallest lots would be nine thousand square feet, so, you know, you're talking sixty percent of that would be, seventy percent, so, um. One of the things, you know, with having a little bit different lot sizes as well, um, there's always obviously different ways that you can combat as far as saying, oh, we, we want the larger lot sizes, just like, you know, what I call maybe the legacy, um, homes that were built in Lakeside, that have the, the larger lots. Well, we bring a new development too, um, and we made them the same lot size as those. I think some of the marketability for someone to sell their home that is in that legacy side has a little bit more of a battle to overcome, because now I got the same lot size, a little bit, an older home versus the same lot size, the newer home. So I think it, it brings a better marketability to have the little smaller lot size, but not something as small as Mariners Way, obviously. That's just, those, that are pretty close, it's not a difference. The other thing was the minimal entrance and exit points, there's only one more entrance and exit that we're looking at bringing in by doing this, and that's off seventy-nine. You know, the other, the other way is through Edward Way, which is already there.
Which would be just down, not three hundred yards from the commercial entrance. You might have a commercial entrance opposite.
Um, so some, some benefits, obviously, we're saying is it does unify the community, um, it, it allows you to actually have that pathway, whether it's a walking path or whatnot. I think it's really, yeah, I don't know, it's just me, I, I think a community fishing pond is pretty neat, especially for Lakeside City, you know, it's just, seems like you should have a fishing pond or something almost, you know? The, uh, additional tax revenue on the commercial project, as well as two hundred home worth of tax revenue. And we would, we're proposing that we would take care of the roads in the sense of putting down concrete instead of issue, y'all were just addressing with asphalt. Um, we would want to bring in concrete, so it's a load and no maintenance cost for the city as well. Any questions or concerns on that?
So this is a tenure plan, more or less?
Yeah, more or less, you know?
Is the, is the value of the city part of it on the days, face off on the days value and not an elevator?
It, it, there, there's a little bit of inflation cost, obviously, we don't know quite what that may do to me, you know, um, but, so based off the estimates that we got from engineering, uh, that quarter question you went and put together for us, took those costs that we're asking for the city and inflated them by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over that, that timeframe, whether that's appropriate amount or not, I guess, what you can tell, you know? But, um, I did, I did want to buffer in a little bit for some of that inflation.
And the phase one, the tenured thousands, including the, us doing the water and sewer line?
Yes, sir. And one thing that we don't know, it may be less, because we don't understand exactly where all your utilities are, you know, again, that, that's one reason we wanted to favor that Edwards Way, is because we felt as though it's probably a smaller initial cost for y'all, as well as it is for us, to be honest as well, because we do have a street there. So I felt like jointly, it's probably below this initial cost for everybody, um, whether that's true on the outside, I, I don't know that either, because I don't know it goes into.
We're assuming it's some kind of, but I think it's pressurized, right, that, that, I don't know, current side of, that would probably be changed a lot to sixty percent, huh? Because you have water there.
Yeah, water is over there.
That would help a lot.
Yeah. With the, yeah, looking at, like I said, phase one, um, most of the ones that are facing Edwards Way, I can just see, looking here, most of the existing utilities are already there. It would be my thoughts on it, on this cost that they're proposing, um, don't know how accurate it is, but before y'all assume that we're gonna have to absorb that whole cost, we could look into, you know, obviously, right now, when you build a new home in Lakeside City, you are charged a water tap and fee and a sewer tap and fee, tap into our system. And, um, those fees, uh, have not been adjusted very much over the years, obviously, costs have been charging down up, um, so literally, we're breaking pretty close to even right now on those fees. It'd be something I would look into, that on this new development, you would have to charge a higher rate for the water tap fee and sewer tap fee, which would offset some of the costs of this, if y'all still choose to go this route.
What are your rates for water tap, you know?
Uh, water tap total and everything is fifteen hundred, and then right now sewer, uh, the total in all is a little over a thousand, a little bit plus thirteen hundred.
I mean, I think, I think my biggest concern is just the over a million dollars I've granted to you made over ten years, and that's if process had the same.
And just to clarify, if the city is not doing actually, I mean, go into this year, still gonna proceed forward with the, the development?
For sure, yeah, I think it's a great opportunity, um, with that land, this hardware, we need to bounce around, um, what we would look at doing is doing larger lots, accepting systems, um, and, and, uh, this, we haven't completed that whole entire cost analysis, because obviously, we want to work this partnership with it first, um, but we wouldn't have to put the concrete roads, we'd have a lot of development possible. We understand that, we know that, but I, I don't think anybody wins at that.
What, what is your ideal target for house prices on this first phase?
On the first phase, so initially, me and Doug have talked about that a little bit, we think off of Edwards Way, just because it will fill as new to, for people, um, it probably won't be as, um, sought after as, say, some of these newer ones on the inside, um, so we'll probably be around that two sixty to, to two eighty range, uh, and then as we, as we start developing more on the inside, I believe that price would go up. So we went off of our current taxes right now, one three seven eight six zero, and did a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar home, you're looking at just for Lakeside City taxes, you're looking at nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents per home on our current rate. Nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. So, hey, I'm just doing basic math, Dave, please don't blame me, so if there was obviously two hundred homes built at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I mean, if there's two hundred homes built after nine hundred, whatever, you're looking at roughly two hundred thousand dollars a year more bringing in.
Not including the commercial?
Not including, yeah, commercial, not including, uh, water revenue, we make water off, I mean, we make revenue off our water supply, we make revenue off our sewer, um, so you would be bringing in other.
As revenue, as minimal amount.
Yeah. Yeah. This would be more or less, um, if not annexed, another one, just like triangles, uh, Boma Triangle States, where we provide the water, there's no sewer, no water, that's another one of those things, you know, the home value over there of those, and what they bring, and we don't get those taxes, those property taxes.
Now, I envision the ones by the lakes probably gonna be a little more expensive.
Yeah, and, and the one in phase four, that's the highest elevation over there, and so there's beautiful views, I think that's something that will really stand out and bring some more market value to those as well. So, and that, that's, that's why I'm saying as far as first phase, I would say that's probably pretty average, uh, but I'd, I'd definitely see them increasing from there.
Is there a water line down that way?
Yes, there is a water line down that way. There's also a sewer line down that way.
Have you checked out the size of the residential lot, what about on the commercial lot, what kind of?
There's, I believe it's right around a half, well, one and a half acres, um, and what, what I did a little bit on that to try to understand is, I kind of took the, uh, footprint of that Dollar General right there off of Seymour Highway going towards Holiday, understood what they needed from there, and then compared it from this layout and it's there.
Dean, have you had a chance to look at this?
Um, this is the worst I've seen of it, even though it happened down the hallway from it.
We've, we've tried.
Yeah, we've been keeping this separate.
I do want to clarify that, Dean is not, even though he's a partner in court, he has nothing to do with this project or anything else, um, this is another.
Are we gifting that commercial lot to him, or are we paying him?
So we, we would, we wouldn't give.
Could have been great.
Yeah, but, uh, we'll gift all the tax revenues, yeah, so we, we would hold on to it, we would sell it now, whether it was a business that y'all saw that you wanted to come there, we're fine with that. And I think that'd be a great idea.
The business bought from you.
Correct, and we're kind of as, as, you know, a team, I'm understanding exactly what it is and what the goals are, and, and try to get that, that business in. Because I feel as though if we went out and tried to sell somebody, hey, we're in a business here, I think they will just have business go sometimes, they'll try to figure out everything in the front side as far as what they're gonna come to you as, and say, this is my wish list, if not, I'm not going to, yeah, I got that, where if y'all know what you want, you can bring to somebody and say, hey, we want y'all first, but if not, we're going to go to someone else. But this is what we're willing to offer you, and I, I do, I feel as though it's probably a better approach.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I do, and we're hoping to, you know, to make, give you more commercial acreage, uh, but we, we, we kind of kick this out, we just don't know what would be good without cannibalizing from JPs, you know? So we, we, we'd love to hear y'all's ideas, man, so if you have some. So just to clarify, you're not dead set on this block right here, y'all are willing to negotiate, we wanted to say, hey, we want, we want to see more commercial zone right here, or y'all saying this is dead set, take it or leave it? It kind of depends, just be, just, to be honest, as far as, I think the, um, the companies that you'll be bringing in, what they're willing to pay for commercial land, whatever we bulk up, will be less that we will be able to make off than versus lots. And so, um, it's, it's a big ask, not knowing what that is, and so I'm hesitant too because of that, you know, that's just me being candid about it, we know that we would make more money off of the lots.
So you, you think in two years, uh, phase one, I mean, I know that's nothing to hear actually.
For sure, and I, I think, you know, um, our area is always a little slower to react than, you know, the, the metro areas, and, you know, we haven't really felt what COVID's done. And I, I think it's probably coming, you know, I think it's gonna hurt us a little bit more over the, the months coming, uh, so I do, I feel as though they'll probably just slow down in the market. Um, but if you ask people right now, people are buying houses and, or doing all that stuff still, so I, I do feel that it'll probably slow down a little bit to where it'll be that two-year mark. I like, you know, obviously, it's great to, you know, hammer a project out, go and get it done and over with and pay, let's move on to the next, but I like the, um, the, uh, oh, yeah, the exclusiveness of only so many lots per year, now, it's just one of those feelings about Lakeside, right, it's, a lake, a house in Lakeside don't stay on the market for nothing, it's because people want to be a part of this community. And so if we're saying, hey, there's twenty lots available this year, I, I, I think it's neat because you have people that really want to be in that community, you know, instead of, we got a whole bunch of inventory, we need to settle it, settle it, let's drop the price so we beat some spot. You know, I, I like the approach of, of exclusivity.
What'd you say the price range on phase one, two sixty or what?
Two eighty.
And we're also kicking around, you know, if homeowners want to come in and buy a lot and build themselves, you know, we would be willing to probably sell a lot to them to do that.
We would probably want to look at maybe some restrictions as far as, um, timeframe for them to do that, just for the simple fact of, we don't want y'all to have to keep sending out letters to motor lot, because once someone buys a piece of property, they'll forget about it, so it's time to do something, uh, so.
Now, that is a little more revenue like that.
Yeah.
Compared to the street, or I mean, the sewer and water.
Gotcha.
We would work together with y'all to try to figure out some deed restrictions too, you know, we've, we've got a few ideas on that, we don't want, we wouldn't want any vinyl siding passed below eight foot, if you can do a two-story, these deep brick, and do some kind of siding up there, uh, two-car garage, things like that, so.
Yeah, the, the, the plan intended is not to come in here and cook each other either, you know, that's, that's something that, um, me and Doug take pride in, in what we've accomplished over the years as far as, for their namesake even is, you know, if we're gonna do something, we want, it's not about every single penny, it's about, hey, I could say I did that, and someone's gonna say, I, I like that, to be honest with you, I'm proud to put my name on it, I feel. And so we, we do, we want to have some restrictions that, that will keep it, where it's not just a little behind the stadium, like, you know?
Kind of project to go down, that's probably the biggest project that's time.
For sure, yeah. So we're, we're building this home right down on Ford Road right now, um, that little development that we did, you know, um, my kids go to Holiday, and my, my wife takes our kids down Ford Road every day, and, you know, it was one of those things where, nice house, nice house, nicest house, and then a couple of trailers and, you know, kind of a trash, and that was, that's what people, as my kids would get on, they'd drive through the communities, maybe they go play ball or something, but, but see, you know, that's, that's not something a lot of people, that's the town, you know, and so we did, we, we bought that, um, and as, if you ever have a chance to drive by there, you'll see.
Stagel's ass or?
Yeah, Stagel's ass, yeah, nothing took each other to any one of those houses, they're all, you know, they're, we, we call them custom specs, because, you know, Doug will get me, I'm, I'll pick, I mean, my wife pick out all the, the pretties and colors and stuff, it's like, you know, all these other builders, they just go with one, yeah, we can't do that, you know, we, we want, we want different, we want some be proud there versus the next one.
How many houses was that?
Seven.
That one like a year or so, a couple of years?
Yeah.
That was quick.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely whatever, how, when you put your mind to it, you know, you want to get done, but like I said, this is neat for us as far as the exclusivity, you know, uh, we did offer some of our lots for you.
So is this something, because my kids go to Holiday too, and is this something that this district is giving the information on, or, hey, this is what we're looking at, just for, um, districting and things like that, I just worry about things getting too big.
Yeah, for sure, I, I think Holiday already has that understanding of, it's a sought-after school right now, and as you see, they're doing some, um, new schooling right now, they're actually building or extending on whatever, you know?
On the trip.
Yeah, uh, because they see the, the rise, and, and so it's the same thing, it's not like we're gonna inject two hundred kids or three hundred kids right away, um, but, yeah, we would definitely let them understand that this is something that's going on, and we would like to. The other side of it is, I, I don't know if y'all have noticed the movement, probably the past few years, a lot of these, um, a lot of the, that country, like cottage homes, well, those are for sale like crazy, because nobody is enjoying that area as much because it does need so much work, and so just because they still may have that rivalry, if they want their kids to go to Wichita Falls or Ryder, I think they would still appreciate something like this, and still have their kids go to some of those others, that Wichita would take a transfer all the way along. The other side is Archer's been getting a really big bump, you know, it's not that far, you know, for Archer, so I, I just, I really think this is such a neat project, because it talks to so many different people with the, with the opportunity of being in the small community, but have whatever access they want to.
The houses on Ford Road, what size were those?
Um, anywhere from, I guess, about sixteen fifty-two square foot was the smallest one, um, up to twenty-one ninety-five.
And I know Holiday's different than Lakeside one, price of a house, but what it does sell for?
The twenty-one ninety-five had a pool, and it sold for thirty-seven, and the si- the sixteen hundred square foot home sold for two sixty?
The large one, that was, was a customer.
It's a customer, yeah. That's that first one or the one closest?
Yeah. They said they took that fence down, because that's a nice, pretty home, now they took that middle, middle fence.
Made a big difference.
It did, it makes a big difference.
I just want to reiterate the fact too, Brett, not to put you on the spot, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah.
I just want to reiterate the fact too, Brett, not to put you on the spot, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, if, and it's a huge if right now, but if we were to see, to proceed with this, we would have to have a public hearing for the annexation and everything else, it's not something we can just vote on and do, we would have to have a public hearing and, and, uh, put the annexation and everything like that up there, correct?
Yeah, and y'all, y'all already own the land?
Yeah, we're in contract, we're supposed to close this, this coming month, um, we just, we're in our due diligence period of understanding exactly how we can restructure first, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to be here in front of y'all.
Yeah, and obviously, once they start selling lots, annexation's a problem, so, you know, while, while it's in one ownership is probably your only shot at that. Yeah, shock you if you're all getting annexation stuff, you have notices and a possible dis却.
Just put it in the paper, everything, okay.
And one thing we need to do, just for our due diligence is to get ahold of, uh, Agent Mike, um, I, I think, for me, that's my biggest concern, is where we're gonna get the money from. Uh, just for my comparison, then I could be off, but, you know, for the forty two homes in the first phase, that's, that's almost five years to pay off. There, each year, each phase is almost five years to break even, just based on tax dollars. So, that, that's, that's our biggest concern, is where we're gonna get the money from. So, we just, now, I think we just need to deal with our, our CPA firm and find out financially, we're, how can we, how can we do this?
I think a five year.
You're right.
I think a five year.
Yeah. You gotta have it first, alright? Any other questions for us?
You asked about the water, water and sewer taps, about what we all think of the cost, you know, I'm happy.
So, those one inch lines, what size lines are those taps?
Uh, yes, no, three quarter, are you talking residential one we had?
Water line is probably three quarter. Y'all allow that with sprinkle systems too?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The most cities require a one inch line with, you know, with sprinklers.
Okay.
Um, I can't, do you remember, now Wichita Falls, they're, they're more money than that.
Yeah, I think Holiday was, yeah.
Holiday was about the same price.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't remember which one, three quarter versus half, because there was a pretty good jump.
Three fifty jump or something, pretty good jump, so.
So, that's something we can, if we needed to afford some costs in there, wanting to, to look at the rates, our current water rate, our current sewer rates, everything like that. Anything else for us?
No, uh, we would love to know how quick we can ask to move those processes to understand the decision, because we are looking for some, and we need to understand which direction we needed to go. Um, but, I don't know, how about how to ask that or?
Well, we could always hold a special meeting for it, but we still have to have a, whatever you were talking about earlier, the citizens.
Inexation.
I definitely think we need to have a special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I definitely think we do, I, um, yeah, I think this is something where we want Dean to review first, look at it, and then also, uh, another accountant will be here next, uh, month to present the audit, look and see where we are, and then also, um, get some feelings from feedback and citizens and stuff on it, and, um, go from there. Um, I, I, I would say, would it, it would be my recommendation, put it as an agenda out of next month on considering going into contract with them and looking at annex. That way, at least by next month, they know whether or not what y'all want to do, that's, that's just my thoughts, obviously I have no vote, y'all can discuss that, which I would like to do.
I was thinking the same, so we have time to cover all bases and check things out, and they don't put on it until about next month anyway, so, still.
Yeah. Um, right now, ten days for July.
Let me sort of backtrack, because I probably put the horse before the cart, I went from the cart to the horse. I know right now, and I know we're fixing to get to it, we are in a sewer dilemma with our sewer system, and if we use our current sewer system, there's no way we can take this decision off. So, I would think we would need to get some answers on our sewer system first, and have that nailed down and concrete before we proceed forward with literally anything more on it. Sorry not to be rude or anything like that too, but we gotta first take care of our current sys- citizens before we take care of the future ones.
For sure, that's why we're in a feasibility paper, so.
With that being said, I mean, how much time could we get from y'all, if we do agree on this next month, we do want to do this, and our sewer's gonna take more time after that, I mean, y'all gonna wait for us, or?
Yeah.
And then long take away?
I think realistically, um, you know, well, we would have to, it would be a few more than we're planning, so, I think, I think kind of what you're concerned, our best case is, we probably wouldn't, we closed July one, we wouldn't actually, you know, start the project to make it look like a difference to be had until probably towards the end of the year.
Yeah, we have to work with engineering to find out long term, uh, how would we do with gravity flow?
Sure.
You know, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's tons of questions like how the drainage is gonna.
Plated and, surveyed and plated.
And I, I would say we've been on the agenda for next, the next month, in that time, obviously we do our due diligence with Dean, if you can get the information that you need.
And also, you're looking at two designs basically, one for what we have now, and one for if you grow.
Sure. Then we can do an agent as well, just, you know, just find out what, right on everything, but, um, I would, I would ask for that, we look forward on this, uh, if this keeps, you know, that you guys, and what we can do at the time being. Anybody else have any other questions? Y'all have any other questions? Thank you for putting this together, for your time and efforts that goes into it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
The ring holiday, it was like. Agenda I, discussion consideration on emergency repairs needed to elevate water storage tank.
I just did one. That's it?
Yep, we did, discussion, sorry, but it's nine C, which is discussion and consideration on approval of payment to contractor in that building company for the percentage of work completed and stored to date, being April thirty of twenty twenty, and the amount of listed there, a hundred thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars. And y'all should have all been given the contractor's application for payment, uh, where he states the amount of work done, he has the spreadsheet, everything on there. I'm gonna motion, one, three.
I'd like to motion to make the payment to metheliken, four hundred five thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars for completion.
Mayor Proton, please make the motion, consider a second.
One second.
If you have an option. All right, Mr. Rogers, second, so, discussion between council, all of the players say aye, opposed, say no, most who passes, friends, the nine B, discussion consideration on emergency repairs needed to the elevated water storage.
Also, as you know, uh, several months ago, y'all approved the rehabilitation of the ground storage tanks, and then, um, upon Dean's recommendation, the replacement of stamp out in the water tower, um, to a stainless steel, um, did that, and in the process, uh, the contractor went up into the bowl, pressure washed it, cleaned it all, um, y'all, Corey has the pictures, um, of it, uh, y'all want to welcome to pass them around, but, uh, upon the completion of it and of the replacement of stainless steel, the thing, they brought to our attention that the bottom three to five feet do not have any coating, uh, inside, it's, it's worn off, literally worn off. See the pictures on there, the condition before, condition after, uh, so the contractor called, me, notified me, I then contacted Dean, our senior engineer, he came out, um, he looked at it, saw the same thing, and it was his recommendation that this is something that we take care of immediately, uh, it's one of those things, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, you're right, but we could obviously fill the tank up just like it is, with the bare metal on the bottom, and, um, it's literally a ticking time bomb before that water starts rusting out those wells and everything else on top, and it literally caves in on us. Am I correct?
I don't think it would cave in in the next six months, but it, what it would do is reduce the longevity of your tank, it would start to grow, just like if you get a thing in your car, it starts to grow, and then eventually would start to fail. We could push this off six months, but we wouldn't have as much steel left over, and so, that's why now that you, you're just about to get into high demand season, we need to fix it now, or we send it back off the line, uh, your needs get to type online.
A couple of the things I will point out, this thing is now, we put it erected in two thousand and one.
I brought them, yes.
And there has been zero maintenance done to this thing, but the only maintenance that's been done to date is, a few years ago, they had a welder that came in, um, and did some repairs to the stainless, uh, coming up to the stainless, to the steel pipe at that time.
Yes, the roacher pipe was leaking, and they, they welded that back up.
And that's the only repair, we never had anybody go in and clean this, anything, and it would be my recommendation that, that we proceed forward with next year's budget and everything else, that we make money in there to keep this thing. Every two years, I know, uh, Archer Mudd has air splains since the die brand cleans it every two years, um, and so, that would be my recommendation that, once we make this repair, we have a maintenance plan in place to keep this from happening again, um.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, the welding on the stamp pipe was a thousand dollars?
Yes, yeah, it was, invoices for roughly eleven hundred dollars to the welder to do.
That's the only money that's been spent on those.
It's, correct?
For the welder.
Do you know of any other work that's been done, I've asked Sam, and Sam said he is not aware of any other work besides the welding.
Well, the only thing that's been done has been the, the work done by the antenna, kind of, the lights and, lights on top, things like that, that's all I know. Uh, normally, we get about fifteen year life kind of a paint job, I've already gone past it at five years, so.
That inside and outside?
Yes.
I want to clear for that, and two, the other thing is, per our contractor, was, y'all also have updated the contract, it was originally for the contractor to do the work, not including, uh, the electrical thing and the engineering fees, with a hundred and eighty one thousand, so, by law, we're only allowed to make up to twenty five percent adjustments, well, this is seventy thousand dollars, a lot more than twenty five percent. So, you would have to declare this an emergency, Dean has put the letter in there declaring it an emergency, um, to make the repairs, um.
Recommended.
Recommended, I mean, recommended, um, we reached out to this contractor, the student award, and he gave us the price, y'all should all have the proposal of seventy thousand dollars. Dean reached out to a few other people, and correct me if I'm wrong, but all the other people were hired, and they recommended the proposal for the coating, um, and the repairs that are needed, correct?
This is a blow in of what I was hearing from other people. There's, uh, a paint supplier that, uh, that supplies the paint that has a good feel for what it takes to do these tanks, and he said that we've got a good deal.
So, your two options are to declare an emergency, make the repairs for seventy thousand dollars, and get the longevity out of it, or don't make the repairs, put it out for bid, prolong the process, and then, you know, according to Dean's recommendation, cause the mortgage to still take this.
Well, it would probably cost you more money if you would, if you bid it out, again, because you have another, um, another contractor in with his overhead and this movement cost.
Where is this one, it's already here right now?
It's already here, we're already moving on a contract.
Is there a change order in this? Is there a change order involved with all this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
What is that price?
He has not charged us a change order fee yet, has he?
For, for this?
Oh, for this, this.
This part is seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, is that what you're asking, he has an additional seventy thousand dollars to have to pay?
Right.
Saying less.
No, no, there's not a change.
There's not an additional fee.
Seventy grand for much damage at all? Is the metal, is there, I know you didn't give me a specific gauge, but I mean, is paint will do it, it's refilling it, I mean, no other patches are needed, or no other?
Not that I know of, I haven't been up in, in that bowl to see it myself, but, uh.
Contractor saying that it can be sealed and?
And you've seen the pictures, and you've seen just the same thing I have.
Okay. Do you think we'd get another fifteen years out of that?
Sure, yes, that's, that's why we need to go ahead and do it, we don't need to leave it alone.
There's, there's enough metal right now that we can come up and be good.
And if it got, if it were to get bad enough, we could go in there and plate, additional plate in there, but that gets expensive, when you start putting plate and additional welding involved. And if you're doing welding inside the tank, it makes the outside of the tank blister, so you have to paint the outside too, then you have to put little patches, so you really won't.
Well, it's hard, we know, we're, we're past that, so we can just coat it and be, be done, not really patching or welding or anything.
But I do not expect to have to do welding.
Amazing, the, the water quality that we have with that amount of rust in there, Chris.
Right, there was more mud and, or I'll say mud, more debris or, or stuff in there than we expected, I think. And it has been flushed out.
But mud and buildup, all that's been with the past thirty years or whatever it's been.
Two thousand and one to nineteen years.
And, you know, people that remember cleaning that with, with, have that kind of accumulation, that's a lot, that's a lot of money.
For not touching that thing for nineteen years, you're very lucky for not touching it for nineteen years, um, but I think it's our due diligence to have some kind of maintenance plan from this point forward to keep these things from happening, so you can prolong it and get thirty, forty, fifty years out of the thing.
Well, we don't have to declare emergency whenever things aren't done, and.
Right.
Um, I spoke with, uh, Agent or accountant, and asked him where he would recommend pulling the fund from, do that, um, and just so you know, um, just to give you a rundown of our thing, uh, we cannot use any money from a certificate of obligation, a certificate of obligation was stated for building, streets, and sewers, so we cannot use any of those funds, or what I want to. Um, we do have a, a enterprise technical account, it only has eight hundred and three dollars, and then we've had it for years, um, you can leave it, I mean, we're, we're making pennies on the dollar, uh, each month on interest. Um, there is a Wells Fargo, one of those heavy accounts that we have, um, that has two hundred forty six thousand dollars, nine hundred, two forty six, nine oh eight, nine point five, so two hundred forty six thousand, uh, dollars in it. Um, and then, um, the enterprise revenue has roughly six hundred thousand in it, um, so, it would come out of the revenue. Um, you could, if you wanted to, we still have that, the money left over, um, from the American National Bank, uh, Money Market Enterprise, uh, that's where we've got, pulled the money already out of those reserves to pay for, um, the hundred eighty one thousand plus the engineering, you know that? We currently have a balance of fifty six thousand, two hundred fifty seven dollars and seventy cents of today.
But what needs to come out of the, uh, enterprise fund, right?
Yeah, and that, that American National is the enterprise reserve account.
So, what was, uh, Edson's recommendation?
Edson's recommendation was to pull it out of the, uh, revenue account for, from Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo for the enterprise, which is roughly six hundred thousand currently.
After this, I know we're pretty deep into it, after this, we should be kind of done, right, sand pipe's gonna be good, we'll pay for that and everything.
Water tower wise, uh, ground storage is completely done, redone, looks great, and water, water, for the operation of it, yes, I think the operation of the water tower.
Right, now, it's, it's getting time to do the exterior.
What about the interior base of that?
The interior base has got some pretty good corrosion on it.
That's what scared me the most.
Yes, it's, uh, getting a lot of sweating, and a lot of water coming down on it, and we're gonna do some possible changes to allow some ventilation to occur. Um, honestly, we don't know if possibly the, uh, radios that have been installed by others in there have caused you a problem.
Or do anything about those, are we pulling any of that and selling anything, uh, on the antennas and stuff we're not using anymore?
That, I don't know what your agreement was with them, if they removed it or not, but it should be sealed up, my main concern before with like, an electrical current that would make it rust. And we don't know what the old system was like, there was, there was a first one put up about five years into this black tank.
I know for sure that there were, the old. I know for sure that there were, the holes were not sealed.
Those are not sealed.
The holes aren't sealed, and that just let, that allows some air to go in and out, that's okay. But it's the electrical field of antennas and the electrical papers, one of that causes, that's my concern.
Do you have any agreement with this one company right now?
Three. Agreement with medical, rise, and then charter communications. So there's three agreements up there. Now, how many of those, I mean, they still send in a monthly check for the tower rental fee, but now if they're in operation, I don't know.
Do you have concerns about that?
I do have concerns about the radio being up there, and one thing I would like to do is to install some additional nodes, which are magnesium, which they would corrode rather than the tank. And we'd have to just maintain those.
My only concern is that bottom that you were talking about, if we have to go back in there and patch it. Worst case scenario, we could just put a node in there and still use the top mold.
Right, you could repair that bottom as it is right now.
I just don't want to spend money on the top or the bottom.
Right. Well, that needs to be done when you do the exterior, you're gonna do it within the next year or so. Because it does need to be patched to.
I'm Kirk from home, but because of the paint and the rust and stuff, are there recesses, any kind of bombs through T C gear and all that?
None that I can think of. The kinds of things that would be a problem be if you have holes in them, things like that. Because the water itself is safe, it's just not being, the tank is not being protected.
And we have, and this posted on our website, yearly water quality report, we, our water from City Beach Falls, and they do, D C Q comes every year and does a water quality report on us, and so we've never had any write-ups or anything. So, yeah, don't think the water's not unsafe or anything like that.
Obviously, we have no choice.
Yeah, I've exhausted all options. I really don't know of any other choices besides putting it up there. Hope that nothing happens, that you don't, obviously Dean does not recommend that.
I agree.
I'm making a motion to approve that seventy thousand dollars.
Mr. Secretary, make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Williams, second to the discussion between council. My only thing is, I think we do have to get on to, we have to get on to kind of maintenance repair for this thing, because this is going to eat us a lot of fuel, so. Eric, I would charge you with bringing them to the council as far as what maintenance, it's gonna be like, it's gonna be a bit of a time.
And the contractor said, if we proceed forward to do this, and I call him tomorrow and tell him to do it, and I'll get here, tell him, you're early, so you can get here, then Labor Day or Memorial Day, Memorial Day, October twenty-sixth, he could have a crew here, if all things go well, mobilize, start the necessary repairs.
Eric can also ask that if there's any antennas up there that are not for the contracts that we have, that they've even.
Okay.
How long are those contracts?
I think, you hear?
Five years, five years is what the contracts are, so. We reviewed them, and I mean, they're really, they're short, brief, and not too much to it, I mean, you just decide to keep your stuff in there and everything else like that.
If you don't mind thinking about having the date with the, requiring the date with the magnesium bases on, is by their lease.
The anerons or the?
Ano, anover, it's a place for the same things in your water, but it's a larger unit. But I'm sure that wouldn't keep them from leasing, so.
What if the cost of this?
I'm working on getting pricing on that, I'm sorry, I'll have it for you right now.
Would you say whatever's up there that we're gonna leave, and then prior going further, if we do that, I think it's something that we definitely need to have the England guys just, if that interference and all that stuff is gonna cause any problems, I can just.
Right, that is a concern.
It's, I think we'll look at that too. It might not be worth the money that we're giving monthly to do that, if it's causing more issues. And we don't know for sure, but.
Right, that's the part of the thing, we don't know if it might have been something from years past that's gone now. But this, if you look at this tank and then look down, go down the road and look at its twin sister at Archer County Mo, you don't see the same things occurring.
And they're built at the same time?
Built very close to the same time, about the same company.
They have a maintenance program.
Well, that's some of it too, but they may not have put their antennas off, percentage of it.
All right, there's been a motion made, any other discussion between council? All of them, very excited. If I was to say no, motion passes. Brings us to nine E, discussion consideration on the warning a local realtor to ability to advertise list and take out the things that would desire a rent lease for the vacant office space available in the O C Hall at forty-seven down three.
Obviously, y'all know, we've now completed all the necessary repairs and everything else to the office space over here. So you asked me to reach out to three local realtors, I did, I reached out to Madonna Smith, Cheyenne Key, and Leanne Burnett, we should all have the proposals in there. I will say, you should email it, Madonna Smith emailed me back and said, no, flatly, she didn't. She can't look at the building, she was too busy, and there's a lot of things going on, she just, you know, to accept it or put in the offer right now. Now, again, this is y'all's decision whether they proceed forward with, y'all want to rent it out, or whatever you would like for us to do with this office space. I know Brett and I had a conversation about if we do rent this out, do we have to charge sales tax or anything like that? And a lot of our research, we would not have to charge sales tax, we'll pay sales tax on it, correct?
I'm not an accountant, but if an accountant says that sales taxes aren't due on lease or, you know, on leases, then they're not. But I'm not an accountant.
I did reach out to Edgen, or Mike Edgen, I'm sorry, and with Edgen, Parkin, Parkin, Clement, or however it goes. And he said he was not aware of anything like that, but to confirm, which are, turn it off. Two people that say no, they're not aware of this deal. Now, I'm not an expert, and I'm claiming to be on this kind of stuff. But Edgen's emailed to me, he was not aware of any kind of rules like that stating that we would have to pay sales tax on, we own the building and we're a city.
So if we did this on our own, that would be something that like who would handle that? We would have to, as a city.
That would, that would be y'all's decision on how we handle it and do it internally.
Pretty much the fee is about the same for handling it.
Yes, the listing fee is the same for each realtor, there's a difference there.
Pretty much less than fee is what they do, some commission first month, right?
Yes.
The difference in these two are the the listing prices.
From what I read, yes.
Of course, what they reinforce.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors that go into, speaking with both of them, there's a lot of factors. You might have a tenant come in here and say, hey, I see y'all are asking eighteen hundred dollars a month, I'll sign a three-year lease for the fifteen hundred dollars a month. That would be something y'all would have to review and do, or you might find a tenant that comes in here and say, no, I want it for the one year at eighteen hundred. I mean, there's a lot of ifs and and ands.
Well, I see that, and one of the proposals is if they sign a longer lease, then.
Yes, most likely, that's usually what they do, if you sign a longer lease, you come down to the price, because you know they're gonna be there for that many years, you're not gonna have to worry about it, another year, two years.
What if they sign a longer lease and they break it?
And this would be something that, in the rental agreement, obviously, or lease agreement, our attorney would have to review it. I would recommend having Mike Edgen auditor review it, and then make sure that we're happy with everything with it and stuff. So there would be at least, just like if you broke your rent contract, you'd have to be for it.
And there could, and there'd be a civil matter, there might be litigation, we have to mitigate by trying to rent it out to another renter. But, you know, we have recourse.
And we have the right to list it for whatever one to put it on there.
Yes.
These are just recommendations I'd be just wanting to ask.
Correct, and I will say currently, there's nobody in it, well, Leanne did call me, and she said she might have one potential thing, candidate down at the big blue building. And she was wanting to know if she could propose this thing to her, I said, you definitely can show it to them, but I can't do anything until y'all make a decision on what y'all want to do, whether to lease it out or leave, what do y'all want to do?
Well, right now, sitting vacant, what, what are we paying monthly? Like, I guess utilities, basically?
Yeah, we're just paying utilities, electric, and we keep air conditioning up. That's the only thing, you should know, there's one meter for this whole building that operates both those sides, this building and that, there's one meter, so it's, you can't, to go in and get it split out, where they are responsible for their electric bill, this is responsible for theirs. Had to be big dollars, and so in those tosses, you can see they've assumed we would take care of everything, water, sewer, and electricity. So they're one of my people who cover everything.
So no matter what, before we bring this out, I'd like to see when we were running this full blown over here, what those costs were.
Full blown with these costs and everything, you were looking anywhere from four hundred dollars a month to six to seven hundred dollars a month during the summer. Now, keep in mind, you got the V F D on it, you have this thing. So, and then there's streetlights, I know everybody's like, oh man, and just recently, since I've been here, we changed everything out to L E D. We have changed lights outside to L E D, and so we've done some energy saving measures.
What is it running now, not using it, like, which is the V F D, the V F D and stuff that's on, so what would be the price?
Y'all, you know, um. We pay somebody to build it. I don't know. Direct energy, I don't want to quote here, maybe, but I mean, they're.
Let's get that price, that we know exactly about what we're looking at increasing.
Well, and I did, I looked at last year's history and gave it to them, and it was an average of four to six hundred dollars a month for this whole building.
That would be.
Electricity.
That'd be tight.
No, the lease, this thing, if y'all read, it covers everything. So the, whatever you rent it for, twelve hundred, eighteen hundred.
We were in.
Would cover that.
I do have one question, on lease, when my daughter was at school in Lubbock, she lived in, you know, like a quadriplex apartment. You signed, it's all bills paid, included in your rent, but there is an overage that is split between each four apartments if anyone goes over. And they, if you went over electricity or water, then you had an over, the water bill was included, we didn't restate that. And so the overage of water, you had to pay extra in your rent because of that. So if there's something, if there's a lease that we could set up somehow, that if overages have a certain amount, if you go over, then the apartment complex bill them, because their water for their apartment complex costs more. And they knew which building, which quad used how much water.
So just.
Stuff like that, can, can you put that in a lease?
Well, a little bit more complicated, details, to date, there's not a water meter installed on this building, there never was, ever since the city was, this building was built, there's never been a water meter, so there's no way of tracking the usage of the water. Now, that's something we, we can do, y'all want to dig it up, put it back, and then track it, we can definitely track it. I, from what I gather, when previous administration told me, there was never a meter put on there because it was the absorb cost of the city, it was a city building, and they were doing it, so. That is, that is y'all's choice, if y'all want to add a water meter to it.
I'm kind of referring to electric too, that's what I was saying. I'm just saying, on, if the college apartments, it was water, that's all they can control in your lease agreement, because they paid your water. So here, if we're saying, okay, it's gonna be twelve hundred dollars a month, and it's all bills paid. Can we say, since there's only one electric meter for this building, that you get X amount of dollars for your electric bill, anything over that is your responsibility, or you have to pay an overage fee? If it's an average, like.
Yes, if they were the only tenant, but obviously, come when the new building's built, the utility department is taking the fire department over, and they will be using electricity in their daily too. For lights, air compressors, tools, stuff like that, I mean, that's a great point, it's a hard situation.
And that's one time, that's going along the lines of that, is like, I wonder what it runs now on dry versus a four hundred, the six hundred dollars in. So we should know about, hey, you can use up to four hundred bucks, you know, if it goes over four hundred dollars, then the direct absorption costs.
Can you answer first thing in the morning?
No, I mean, I'm not, I just think that's something we have to consider.
Okay.
So there's one water meter for the whole thing, and, I'm sorry, not water, sorry, so there's one electric for the whole building, all the way down?
The whole building.
The majority of it's gotta be used over there than these two.
That would be my thoughts currently, when those offices were occupied, but obviously, utility department moves in over there, that would be using a lot more.
Maybe there's still bacon when they move in, whatever, not deal with their using.
Some of you look into, that's just a huge chunk.
Yeah.
For us, I'm sure with that, that rant, that's honestly, if there was a rant upwards and.
And I want to say, they gave this, and I know they did, this prosperous square foot was all utility bills included, what, what?
I mean, you don't have to check that, too, if it's true.
I'm a hundred percent sure this includes audio, because I told them, there's no separate beat or anything like that.
So fifteen hundred would include?
Yes.
Well, this one's twelve hundred, so you'd say twelve hundred minus four.
But something's better than nothing, so.
Insurance that we have on there too. Why are you sure?
And you could, you could easily say, we're only gonna do a one-year lease and review it after one year, see what's, what it's doing. Obviously, we're still using the same, so this bathrooms, or heating, could be a common area, that would be shared, go with completely out of this building. You see the thing, it's one of those things after, where exited out of this building, if we also choose not to stay in these kind of chambers, and you can rent that out too for extra revenue.
So it also, not to talk, I don't know how feasible it is, but to, to close off, split the bathrooms, make a unisex, that way someone they're wanting to rent this out, they can still use one bathroom and the kitchen. That's still an option?
Say that one more time.
So split the bathrooms, so they're just both unisex bathrooms, put a wall or a door frame with there, so that way we can rent this out too, and have, where they can use the kitchen and a bathroom.
Y'all want to do that, yes, but I don't think you're gonna get as much office space rental for that area down there, if you, it's about a square foot, realtors looking at that thing, so if you cut out that much square foot, then. Go like that, the only thing, I mean, I.
It's not office square foot, that's the problem.
That is over there.
Well, you have one office, you're right.
That's all considered office space, except for the hallway.
So at this point, we just need to choose who we want to go with, I mean, we can point the details later.
And I think it'd be, you figure out what the bill is a month, maybe, which I told them, was seven hundred, and then you, whatever kind of profit you want to see off of it, you add to that. And say, no, we're sticking at, we want to see a thousand dollars profit a month, and you charge two thousand dollars, and that, you might not even do it. And that was, and they said this, you'll read your presentation, that's the hard thing about Lake City, that's not commercial furnished property, you're not going to get any commercial furnished one. So that's why the cost is, you know, is lower than anything in Wichita Falls or something like that.
Just choose one and then look at that more.
Okay.
So shining keys was just for that side over there, three thousand, just for that, not including chambers or anything.
Well, if you go wrong, they're the one, I just don't know how you choose between them just.
It's a hard decision, I agree, they're both very qualified and experienced realtors.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know a good way to do this.
Yeah.
We can try to listen ourselves and see how it goes first.
State, I've never listed anything, piece of property before, I'm not a certified, qualified realtor. My plate's pretty full around now, so it's just. Now, if y'all want to take on the thing, um, I would suggest, listen, pay the fee and listen up with the realtor, so we can wash our hands clean up and say, if we're not involved in it.
Well, if I just one partying and everything.
One realtor choose, I'm like, do that.
No, I agree, that's a very.
Fair, would you?
Yeah. Hopefully, I think they're both professional and they will understand that.
It was a, who turned urgent first?
Leanne for that.
I know, and it's one of those things where, you know. Well, definitely, it's like South City resident there too.
Three thousand, not one fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that's something we can all change though.
I hate to do it this way, but my vote is for Mr. Burnett, Mr. Sumpf, that she turned it in, or no other, that's it.
Can we write one piece of paper and everybody just turn it in and you count them?
Yeah, Matt.
Can one.
Forever, you making a motion or just say?
I'll just make a statement. I mean, like I said, we're not going to go wrong with either one of them, there's just a bad way that we have to choose to do it, you know, so.
I make a motion when you use Lambretta, like a real. Offices.
Officer.
College head brings the motion, it's just going to be seconds, it's a discussion between council. No discussion, all in the third side. I propose a note. Okay, motion passes. Brings us to nine F, discussion consideration on adopted city ordinance based on the recommendation of the state fire marshal. Fire hydrants requirements to maintenance, follow the Texas health and safety code number three forty-one dot zero three five nine, it was fire hydrant flow standards.
Yes, you know, uh, last month, Mr. Bradshaw presented all of those packets, well, that's to do a, uh, like an item out of, um. Just some facts and some background information, so you can get it out. On Friday, March the twenty-seventh, I received an email from Mr. Bradshaw saying, I'm talking with my agent, considering my house insurance, and I'm needing a copy of the last fire hydrostatic testing showing the flow rate. And reached out to a city engineer, Dean Hinton, asked him, and he said, uh. What did you say, to the best of my knowledge, y'all have all seen the email, um, everything's there. Uh, so then, on April first, Mr. Bradshaw pulled the, um, open record request, gave him that open record request, he pulled it at April first, twenty twenty, at seven thirty-six P M. I responded that same day, just a few minutes later, um, and then, obviously, with the concern, and else, I reached out to the, uh, Mr. Edwards, um, from the ISO rating. Um, and so, he sent me, uh, let me get it right here. On April the twenty-second of twenty twenty, Mr. Edwards did respond with the two thousand and seven, a report. Just some facts, just putting this out there, I think the reason we did not get, we didn't have it on file, was it was addressed to a Mr. James Son, fire chief of Lake City at forty-three Dynasty. Um, and there was not another piece of, this was a copy that was sent out, I didn't, I didn't argue with them, but, um, and then, in two thousand and seven, I have a report right here, it says. Uh, insurance services office, ISO is recommended, the classification we changed to a class six, effective date of three one, two thousand and eight. Um, and this is a upgrade from your previous one of seven nine, uh, seven nine, rated previously. So after that, we started doing some research, uh, we made a list of every one of the fire hydrants, uh, currently total on our water supply system, unless it all happens, which currently, late two. Um, and I reached out to Dean, there's forty-two fire hydrants, uh, within the city limits, uh, there is thirty-five, another. I talked with Sam, I know Sam's been here twenty years, Sam, um, what's the deal on the events and everything else? And they do flush them from time to time, but there's no documentation, they've never documented, hey, we opened this up on this day and plan. Um, and just because they don't have documentation, does not mean it's never been done. Um, I know, uh, you can see on here, I've listed ones that do have a valve in front of them, and if a fire hydrant goes bad, they can valve it off, and then have to shut the whole street off. Uh, those are all listed on there, um, and then we also did some tests, uh, there's the one on thirty-six Canaan. Uh, and it's sixty-two PSI, static pressure, and five hundred fifty gallons per minute, uh, flow. Uh, and then we also tested one right outside the doors here at the fire department, it was sixty-three PSI, static, and six hundred fifty GPM per minute. And so, um, Sam and I talked, and I asked him, I said, hey, can you give me an update on any repairs, anything y'all paid to, um. Fire hydrants, um, and he said, he knew for a fact that thirty-six Canaan hydrant was dug up, and a new tee was put on it, and bag of lugs, and, uh, that was roughly ten years ago. They dug that up, and he said it was over that, and they had to put a cap on it, about ten years ago, just to get water back on, so they got the parts in, and the next day, they break up. So he did say, in his time being here, roughly ten years ago, that thirty-six Canaan's been dug it up, with a new tee, and a new bag of lug, and installed. Not a new hydrant, but existing one back, there's still not a valve on there. Uh, he did say that the fire hydrant from the twenty-six fry, uh, was completely replaced, and had a new valve put on it roughly twelve years ago. Um, and then they also did the same thing, a real long wind jammer dug it up, put a new one, put a valve on it. Um, and then all the, the new additions, uh, Jeff Wood and Mayor's Way, they have, uh, put valves on those, and so. Heard y'all's requests and Jerry's requests, I've included a copy of the. Um, say, fire marshal's request, and, all right, so this is literally y'all's discussion, your talk, um, I know, Dean, when you talked about concerns of coverage, and what the coverage is.
Right, and this map, each one of the fire hydrants that are on the map, except for a few, I know they'll, they'll exist now, or have a five hundred foot circle around them. And you can see there's some gaps in coverage in a few places that probably need to be picked up, this big white area is a park area. And all we have to have is, my understanding from the, the fire code is that we have to have coverage to, of the lot, at one place on the lot, we don't have to cover the entire lot. But, um, I'm seeing a gap up here on Land's End, and I think we're having some discussion about where there are actually some fire hydrants, or, now, this is kind of a little bit preliminary. But we need to go out and drive through it, I don't have a young engineer that's going to get to that.
That, that one back there on Edward's Way, on the backside of Edward's Way, is the only one that.
This one?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty good, yeah, and then, and then what's that one on there?
Here?
Yeah.
That's just from here.
Yeah, that goes down, okay, that's, that's right.
So now, as Sam said, Sam, in your twenty years of being here, have you ever seen a fire hydrant dug up and removed or not replaced? He said, and even on the historical data drawings that we have, there's never been a place that there was a fire hydrant and then it was removed.
On Margie, there was a wonder.
No, if you look, I mean, there's not even a six inch water line there, the fire hydrants have to be on the six inch water line, and so, you would have to be bored up underneath and then put there to be able to have a, uh, qualified fire.
So what, what is that valve right there?
Uh, there's a big transition of where they all come across the road and sit over there, if that makes sense, there's like three valves. Uh, obviously, you know, Margie, there's a few new homes on Margie, and so they put in a valve there to run, where they did extend that line on down there.
Um, well, I talked to Mr. Bradshaw for a pretty good little bit here the other day, and he does have some really good points about the coverage in a couple of places, we're not bad off by any means. I think we do need to put some in, especially the back there on Edgewater, that's, especially if you had to do it in, that's pretty good lakes. So I think we did need to look at that in the future.
On Edgewater?
Yeah.
At the back right there?
Yeah, where it makes the back curve.
Okay. Um, okay.
There's one in that open lot, close to, um, Tyler's dad's house.
Okay.
I think that's the nearest one, none of them pass that. Mr. Riddick's house. Yeah.
And I will say, I think we all agree on this, the exercising of these fire hydrants and flushing them, is something we should. And I know, back in June of last year, this was a concern of the council at that time, and there is money budgeted, apparently, there's ten thousand dollars in fire hydrant maintenance in the budget that y'all set aside last June, which is being bought up, because I know Mr. Snowy, I was in attendance at that workshop, and this was one of his concerns. So there is money set aside in there, um, it's just one of those things, they have been done some time, and so, um. He's going to, he's going to take some work.
What does the new fire hydrant itself run?
Uh, reset to Pete Johnson, Pete Johnson plumbing, he says it really depends on how low the main water line is, so if you got to raise it three feet for the thing, it's one cost, if it's four and a half feet, it's six feet, or it's two feet, it's very. Give it, he said rough estimate you're looking at, put a new fire hydrant in, about then you're looking at fifty-five hundred dollars. Um, back in twenty twelve, on Chris Street, they did put a new fire hydrant in, uh, there was not a six inch water line down Chris, and so they had to run from deep park, the six inch water line all the way down those songs, and put a new one in. And we had receipts there, where it was, it cost eleven thousand dollars to do that.
Brad, I agree, I think Land's End's got some, some group, hopefully, coverage down there that that probably is.
Well, this, this is a, this, we didn't talk about this all that long, because, yes, coverage is very important, but it goes way beyond that. I think we're doing, looking, putting in plugs where we have our gaps, and like I said, we don't have that many gaps, but we do have a few. I do agree with Mr. Bradshaw, I think we need to do some testing. The testing itself, the way our system is, according to my understanding, you have a gauge on these tanks already, that show the pressure in the whole system.
Correct, every morning, Sam and Kevin come in, first thing they do is go in there to the pump house, read the pressure, make sure everything's okay, and there's, it's a little needle thing, and it tells if the pressure dropped or anything else. We do have alarms on them, this is something we didn't have when I got here, and now we've put alarms on, so if there is a low pressure thing, I get alerted, Sam gets alerted, Kevin gets alerted, and then also, city hall gets alerted, saying, I'm worried, you think. I know we had a situation, too long ago, where, long ago, before people even started calling, they had, Sam and Kevin were already out there addressing the issue. And we do have set protocols in place, to where if there is a structured fire going, uh, Sam, this is going to be notified, they come out here and turn on pumps and everything else, so it's not locked. You know.
Right. The pressure's there, I, I figured it was from the get-go, it's not going to be the same pressure it is in Wichita Falls on a twelve inch bank, it's just flat, not going to be there. But that one was, would you say, five thirty and six hundred something? So we're twice and three times over, or the N F P A says we need to be, you know. Testing, I'm not real concerned about testing, I would do it for the safety of the citizens, so peace of mind, I guess you'd say.
Okay.
My main concern is exercising other valves, because that's where the problem is, and you don't have a problem very often, but every once in a while, it happens, anything mechanical does.
So should it be like more of an yearly or every other?
Depending on who you talk to, it ranges from three years to twice a year, they say testing. I would just do it once a year, and just be done with it, because we don't have that many plugs, and if you do, you can do it however you want to, but you can do them all in one month, you can space them out, do several each month. That's the way Wichita does it, is we do so many each month.
That would be better for your water system, water quality, to do it, every, a little bit every month, yeah.
My main concern is, is, um, is exercising valves. I would suggest, here's my only problem with the ordinance, and it's, it's not a problem, but I wouldn't have put in there where that ordinance can't be amended for things like drought or whatever. Because we're not going to be wasting a bunch of water like years we had to pass, and we can suspend it in Wichita, so. I have no problem with the ordinance, as long as we can suspend it.
Okay.
Can you get a copy of Wichita Falls ordinance and we can kind of bear it off of that?
Yeah. How your blow damage right here, very much. Um, I did reach out to fire chief Lon Air, and he said he's all for helping out, he thought it'd be a good idea too, for us to, um, get the city, I mean, the B F D involved, so they. Know where the fire hydrants are and everything else, I do know that Sam says, one of the main reasons that they backed off of the fire department doing it, is because they were breaking stems. I mean, obviously, there's a, there's a procedure to do, you don't just go on to it, and open it up, and let it go, you've got to go slow, you don't want to cause water hammering and everything else, and I guess, years and years ago. They broke a few, had some problems, and what he explains to me, it sort of fell to the wayside then. Um, he did say, years and years ago, when they were doing it, the volunteer fire department was doing it, but then they started breaking things, not on purpose, or intentionally, just because.
A lack of training. They're in prison there when they're doing it, for the training purposes, he says, no.
Yeah, if it is something that's a training issue, then that can be, could that be something that was addressed, and maybe?
It's not even so much a training issue, it is to know, know the location of the hydrants, that's where it is, you can just, you have to go slow.
So some clarification on the lot for y'all, is this, y'all want an ordinance, or do you want a city policy, um, do you want a, uh, we record the valve, the static pressure and hydrant, I mean, the flow, static pressure and the flow test. Uh, or flow pressure of every fire hydrant, and then y'all want this to be? Three of them every month, uh, or one time out of the year, we do all, that, that's that's the clarif- clarification I need from y'all.
Well, these static flows, like I said, I'm not worried about the static.
Okay.
I mean, it's in the paperwork, we can do a static, we, our system is different, I mean, it's just plain simple, our system is different. Static, we're not worried about, we do need a flow rate, I would like to see that in there, wouldn't we do them, and who does them? Doesn't really concern me.
So pretty much what I hear y'all saying is, every year, every January first, y'all want to see records of everyone's fire hydrants tested.
Brad, would you recommend it, would you recommend an ordinance or just the city policy? Um, I mean, if you. If you're looking at suspending it, if you have to, then I think that if you have an ordinance, you have to write that in. I think that you would, wouldn't be having this discussion if it was city policy and they were following it. You know, we were doing this every year because it was city policy, I think that we wouldn't even, like I say, we wouldn't even discuss this. Wouldn't we, so, so city policy would be.
I think it would be fine, unless we have to have an ordinance, and I was in there, so unless we have to have an ordinance, then, I mean, I would take a city policy to do that. As long as we're following it, and if that doesn't do it, then I guess we can readdress it as an ordinance.
I mean, ahead of time, council could decide to suspend if there was a drought or whatever. I think that's our easiest place to do this.
Obviously, if you had ordinance, yeah. Do you know if our system is a grid system, a branch system or a loop system?
It's a, a grid, it's not a grid system because the lines aren't like that, you know, square grid, but it is a loop system throughout.
It is a loop system?
Yes, sir, there are a few places where it is modded, like going up Land's End and things like that, but most places it is loop.
Um, and just, while I reached out, there is a uh. Young man locally that lives here in Lake City, and um, he does sandblast and repaint these things. He gave me a bid of uh, hundred fifteen dollars per fire hydrant, uh, where he went out, sandblasted. And repainted, and he provides a two-year warranty on the paint. Um, I, there's something I'll give you entertaining if you want, um, want it, or if y'all say, while you're doing it, do it all this year. There's, there's y'all, there is ten thousand dollars in the fire hydrant maintenance this year. Well, that that would be my question too, y'all, within the city limits. Hear me out, this, within the city limits, there's thirty-five fire hydrant, I mean, thirty-three fire hydrants. And then there's total forty-two, so y'all wanna be responsible for taking care and the reputation of the ones or whatever, and the testing of the ones. On moment, um, in Highway seventy-nine, or is this something that y'all are only concerned about inside the city limits?
If we own them, I think we can take care of. Right, my, my, my recommendation is, not going south there, is that, I mean, obviously, I can't ask you to, to, you know, I, I would say. I mean, I think we need to paint them, and I think that they need to be sandblasted and stuff, my question is, I would like them to be tested first, at least opened up to see what that's gonna cost. And then if, if we, if they all opened up, closed, and there'll be problems, then that, that money out of the fire hydrant fund would definitely pay for the sandblast campaign. What, what is, what is feasible in amount of time to get those tested, what we do have, I mean, what, what's a realistic time plan? Obviously, we can do it divided up over a year, going past, but I mean, obviously, we'd like to get them done as well, so.
I think it's a realistic goal to have them all done and completed by January first, October one.
Problem is, is then that money that's in the fire hydrant fund, it's not used, and it.
There's forty-two of them, they don't take long, well, he's talking about.
Oh, you're saying have them done by October first?
I would say, I would say August first, to be honest with you, because that gives us time before the light. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We will, we will, we will do our, we will have them done by October first, twenty, twenty, unless. We break one, something happens, catastrophe or something like that, that could be, I assume that'll be everything's on it.
And I would charge the fire department with, you know, making sure that, you know, October first. But let them help out, I think that, I think they can, they can do that, and if they wanna meet with Sam, if one person wants to go with Sam to make sure that they're good and right or whatever. Make sure the fire department's doing it right, and then that's what we do, but. Yeah, I think they can help out as well.
Okay.
I will just throw this in there, that, this, the colors on them, first of all, the colors are green, or the colors are wrong, I mean, green right now, but. If we were gonna spend all that money and go in and sandblast the corner, we're gonna go back.
Well, there's some of them that are red, the one in front of my house is yellow and green, and I like to paint myself.
I like, I like them traditional, I like them red and black myself, yeah, I think it could look nice.
Now, I do, I, from what I, it's quote, it's a one color thing, I'm sure, if you want to detail where it's red and the catch of white, probably cost more.
Well, we don't need to get into spending money on a lot of.
I agree.
Purities, but then again.
I think the best thing, let us start proceeding forward with testing them and all that, and then, once we get the testing done, then we can look at if they need to be painted, sandblasted. Uh, I do know Sam did, on all of these, and I'm sure you know this, there's a little allen wrench that you gotta back out of there, and you put grease in it. And, and stuff like that, and so that, that's. Where we're gonna do that, they've been painted shut, most of them, so, the, the allen wrench, the allen wrench, so, okay, so.
Nothing getting done for the deadline, but then, when we go into an actual policy, at your discretion, you can do two a month, three a month. We can do them all in two days at the end of the year or whatever, but.
So I think we're agreement on a policy versus an ordinance, um, and I'll entertain a motion if wanted, Brad.
Make a motion, we make it a policy, we're saying to testify our hydro every year.
Mr. Cobre makes a motion, Mr. Tommy seconds it, discussion between council. All of the fair side. I propose a no. Discussion, that brings us to nine gene, discussion and consideration on establishing a sewer advisory task force to review existing conditions of the city sanitary sewer system. Just meant to recommend a, because planning and management of the sanitary sewer system in Lake City.
Uh, yeah, this is something I wanted to bring to y'all about. Um, it'd be my recommend, and they, recommendation, uh, that we assign uh, citizens of Lake City. To create a sewer task force about it, that would look into um, our current situation of the sewer, um, and bring to us what their proposal is for. As we proceed forward, uh, with this, or. Obviously, I sent you all an email defining what I thought the task force should be, to evaluate the history and current status of the city sewer system. All pertinent financial factors, potential costs, time, implementation, or all options and the impact of the city state or federal regulations on any policy ordinance enacted by the city. So this is something I wanted to bring to y'all to where we get some more community involvement out there, uh, just to do something that y'all would appoint them. Uh, where they can take applications, and you can reach out to uh, certain individuals. Um, I've had, um, a few individuals come to me and request uh, that they be on something like this. I know there is um, Dean Price, the master plumber that teaches at M S U, very skilled in that thing. It would be my recommendation for him, um, I know there's Jeff Pittman, along the west side, the East River plumber. And I think you get a few business people in there.
Jim Davis.
I'm, I'm sorry, Jim Davis, and then you get some business people that are familiar with contracts and stuff like that, um, I know Scott Storm has expressed interest. I think you would be very good to um, review contracts, look at it, and put forth his recommendations on things too, um. But I do think we look into setting this up, uh, reach out to people and try to get them. Getting more ideas besides just us seven.
Yeah, I'm, I think that's a, I think it's a great idea, and I, I'd like to see an odd number on there, um, instead of like a number of people. I think it's something that we could open up and put on marquees and see what we get.
Okay, advertise it on marquees, reach out to certain individuals, take applications, and then next month. Let y'all go through on the side.
Yeah, I think so.
Or do y'all wanna do it like, hey, we take applications, put on marquees signs, take applications for the next two weeks, and y'all appoint the board next? Next month, and, or what, this, this is where, y'all just need specifics and tell them about it.
I guess my question is, do we wanna keep it to a certain number, or do we just say them, whoever's interested, let them be part of it, that way we don't have any?
Yeah, now, i- i- this, this advisory board would still follow the same exact open meeting rules that we had. So if they met to discuss the stuff, it would be an open meeting, it'd be agenda posted, everything else like that, it would be. Straight team along, I mean, it didn't, for open meetings. Um, so, and, and I know Scott's very familiar with that kind of stuff, and knows all that stuff, and so, it's sort of, I would recommend, like, you know, sort of. Be the spearhead of this, and then get some experts in the plumbing field uh, on it, and go from there. That is just my recommendation, I don't owe anything like that.
Yeah, I, I would just have. My reservation is us picking people to do it, I say let them do it themselves, and if the one that, I guess we could charge one person as spearheading it, and then however they want to. To do it, that, that would be, that's up to them, that would be my recommendation.
I think we could put a timeline on it and not let it drag it out, because the subdivision, everything kind of depends on it.
Sure. Absolutely.
I think we're, well, I'm gonna hear some more here in a little bit about the sewer system, so.
I know there's some good people that would take it. Now, again, this is my recommendation, or open to do whatever.
I'm kind of on the marquee and give it two weeks and see if they express interest.
Do we let them have a meeting and let them choose who they want to spearhead it?
That's what I was wondering, is can they elect their own officers at their meeting?
Yeah, I think that'd be better than you.
Instead of us saying, you're in charge of this committee?
Take names and applications, um.
And let them have a meeting at a certain time and.
Yeah, now, I, I know, just, and we don't have to follow these guidelines these years, but I'll, I'll put on there, it must be a resident of Lake City. Uh, be willing to attend regularly scheduled meetings of the task force. They can't just come to one meeting and never show up again, that'd be more unless your participation. Uh, be, obviously be a registered voter with the same address, uh, resident, 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 residency that you select your application. And uh, members who not maintain at least seventy-five percent of attendance of regulars. But I think that's something you give them, let them do it.
I mean, I think what you need to charge them, when this is your goal of this advisory group, like a judge, that's just your charge, I mean, we don't. That is strictly an advisory task force. And, and, I mean, obviously, we're all elected city officials, and we want to take any considerations where our, where our citizens have, but. Stay on top of your, but, but, I mean, I mean, priority, and, you know, I think if we ever do have a spearheaded, whoever they choose to, that, that we have. Monthly.
Okay.
What I don't want to become is the city's parking, where we have, for the city's park, uh, board in, and this day hasn't done that one.
Only thing I'm seeing is, and this is just, we've seen, you're almost gonna have to appoint a leader, because if not, then they all come together, and what happens when they all wanna be a leader? I wanna be in charge, I wanna be in charge, I wanna be in charge.
Well, I know who's gonna be trying out for it before we pick a leader, really.
So take applications for two weeks, and then have a special meeting for ourselves, appoint a leader, and let the leader go from there.
The only thing I do see on this, we're in a time crunch, and they're gonna have to, with a good timeframe.
I said, maybe we can open it up for a week and then, then you start meeting. I think we, we would all meet with the first, and we can maybe kind of give what we expect them to do, and.
Okay.
More people, we, especially waiting two weeks.
Would one of us need to be a representative at their meetings, or would?
No, it'd be, they're, they would have to come back and present to us.
I mean, you can go to meetings as a.
Yeah, it's open meeting, so anybody can attend the meetings, but those certain individuals that are appointed to that board. Would collaboratively bring us back, they would have one person, and by the fact that they could come, the whole, one person would present stuff to us.
Jim, first, you wanna stop taking them?
Yeah, so, look at your calendars.
You open it for a week.
I would almost say, um, we take applications, you got Memorial Day in there, I would say we take applications all the way up until the. Twenty-nine, we post the meeting on the twenty-ninth, and have a meeting, uh, May, uh, June second.
We do that.
Okay.
We'll stop taking applications on the twenty-nine. Six four, six thirty.
I can get a top thirty. We move back, we wanna do six. Six is better. Six is better, right?
Yeah.
Six clock, you know, supposed to meet for that, okay.
Are we gonna do the new housing edition talk too then, or we gonna squeeze that in later?
Or where we're gonna? Well, I would, I would give them that thing of, uh.
That's gonna be part of the.
So we'll just, we'll just do that, so we'll just get, review the applications.
Get a board going, and then, and then, okay. Advice. I would just need a motion for that, I guess.
I'll make the motion, that's stated.
Mr. George makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Just for a second, discussion between council. All of the fair side. Brings us to item eight H, discussion only on city, every day we TP, required treatment plant, lagoon. And possibly a returning sewer back to city, which for walls.
Um, yes, just, keep this on the agenda, keep going, business, keep giving updates, we just don't want it to fall to the wayside again.
So just to recap, uh, one is back in service?
One is now back in service.
What was wrong with that pipe, that connect, was it crushed, caved in?
It was clogged, there was so much sludge in one that, there's little PVC pipes sticking up. And the sludge filled up so much that it got into those pipes, and that's allowed, since we had drained it, let it sit. Sam and Kevin were able to go out there, put extensions on it, just so it can take that much more water before it goes in there, so they, uh. Jet-routed it, got it clean, um.
What is the maintenance on that look like going here forward?
It's. Little again.
Well, just that pipe, for sure.
Uh, the pipe is clear right now, but obviously, as we take on more sewer sludge, it will continue to build up. And then eventually it'll get back just like it is.
It's our goal to every two years drain one, clean it out, make sure.
Well, let me. And once we click, get it cleaned out, or depending on how we handle this project, should we go uh, into a cleaning operation on that pond, it wouldn't be a problem again.
Yes.
These ponds have been in operation since the seventies.
Yeah, I'll be right back for that. What is that, six that runs in between the two?
Those were sixteen five.
Yeah, you said there's just a handful of cities that have ponds like this left.
Um, there's, no, I know, several in Panhandle, there's, Petroleum has pond system, One Line. Um, Newcastle has three.
So it's still pretty.
They're, they're pretty common, they're uh, pretty economical, really. Their operating costs are pretty low, there's not a lot of energy involved with one, and that helps. Um, that's one of the considerations we're gonna have to have going forward, is energy costs, maintenance, manpower. What, you know, the manpower out there is getting to be pretty high, but what would a regular treatment plant take? How much manpower would that take, and we need to do that evaluation. One thing's interesting, that's gonna make it a little bit difficult, and not too bad, is whether we consider, how much we consider on this upcoming development or not. But really, if you think about it, we probably ought to consider that upcoming development. But really, if you think about it, we probably ought to consider that upcoming development, whether it happens or not, be prepared for that to occur. So that provision needs to be prepared for.
Yeah. And then, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've said that we're pretty much at ninety percent capacity as it is, but that's Lake City being fully developed, not including the new development, but it being fully developed. Hence, parts are high and everything else, that's, it's not ninety percent, and it's, where you say it's not, you, you have an eighty percent rule and, and you designed it to where if all these homes were built right here.
Well, and that was designed, that was designed back then basically as a disposal.
Right.
It was, they were called evaporation ponds when they were first put in. So that tells you, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
They were putting them back when the Clean Water Act was enacted. Looked pretty old. But uh, well, they just need to be looked at and all that needs to be considered.
Yeah.
Uh, did get some clarification last weekend on, from the uh, cities or engineer about how they went about sizing some things at some of their uh, estimates. So now I have some data that I can work from to make some reasonable judgments as to how much it would cost to pump two whistle balls or what your cost might be. I now have that data where I can put it together.
I don't want to get some of that. That, I'm sorry, that, that.
Well, now that I got it, I can evaluate it and calculate some things. So that's, you know, yesterday and today I could do it. So I've got that in my, in my works to get done, because that, we need to get moving on that for, for this project that needs to be done and for that future project that might occur.
Do we have our part-time summer help with the lagoon, mowing and all that? Justin, yes?
Okay.
Yeah. You are important, Jim.
How is, how is the level of pond four right now?
Um, I have pictures of all. It's uh, the, the guys have diligently been out there and we've hit, we've, for the past almost little over thirty days, we've consecutively irrigated. And they've done great, great progress and it looked good. I mean, they have done quite a bit of good work. One rain, you're right, and, and, you know, that would be something that I would like the task force to look at. Our, one, our, not the biggest problem is our INI. Meaning, it rains, certain people have done things in their backyard, not at the code, um, without our knowledge. I mean, it's not just, it's throughout, everybody's guilty of it. And then it rains, people don't realize it, a lot of people don't realize it or anything like that. And it goes in there, does that, um, short story, I, I spoke with David Coleman, uh, the thing, he used to be assistant city manager at College Station. They did a big smoke test study, where you come in and you smoke on the lines and the smoke comes up and it starts showing where all the leaks are and they find out that at College Station, there was a library and the library had a huge drainage system for like a huge park and everything. It was tied into the system, sanitary sewer system. And I was one of the, and, and that stuff, like, we don't know, we don't know, we've done walk, where they tapped in and stuff like that, and so um, that would be one of my suggestions of looking at, having the task force look into the INI situation also.
Where we on with good as far as aeration and all that stuff?
That's part of the calculations.
Okay.
That's comparison, doing the aeration on that, that will give us additional uh, capacity.
Do you think, uh, obviously, we want to get this task force going, get them set up?
Uh, I'll be ahead of them.
Okay. You can have some concrete numbers for them.
Is part of your numbers, just ain't that pump from Wichita, is any of that involved?
Yes, I, I discovered this from last weekend. Just one month. Uh, in a half million dollar range. And just for the bump, for what they were talking, proposing to do.
The whole thing?
For their port, for their portion only, not for the pipeline getting down to them. And so, some of that is for them expanding that pump station to cover more area within Wichita Falls.
Right.
So, I have to factor in just your portion to make it, see where we might be to compare that price to alternative way you're living.
It'd be interesting.
Yeah.
Do we just need to carry this over to next one?
Yeah, we're, keep it going. Any other questions, uh, concerning this agenda or this, this question? And I do want to say thanks for all your efforts, thanks for getting the information to us and appreciate the time and everything. Do you have any questions for us?
Not right now.
For a while. A task forward for a minute. Bring this to number ten, the items from council that's going on in favor.
I don't have any say at this point.
Your favorite.
First of all, there's a little development for our streets, for our streets and stuff.
Sorry, I spoke with uh, Mr. Ludworth, asked him, and they, we need to get moving on this. And he was, obviously, the COVID has played a big part in all the things up and seeing what the economy is gonna do and stuff like that. Um, I would like to see something done to where, uh, if we don't have any results, X amount of days of progress being done, we come in, keep it due. In terms of developers agreement or do you put something in, to where we can get that stuff accomplished and have a deadline and everything else? But I don't want to see that project show down anymore.
So is this property now, since there's houses on it, the whole property tax will have?
Yeah, it's paying residential property taxes on it. Uh, I do know that, I guess Pete Johnson, who's come in, on the sewer line on down Village Joyce, those properties go, and so, I would like to see something like that.
Push my head.
Anything else, Lord?
That's all.
Scream?
No, I'm.
I have a lot of that.
I'm, I guess we're still waiting for the city attorneys?
Yeah, and, and that's, and courts are, courts are still administrated with public right now. Where all, all the different courts are having to work on a reopening plan and run it by the office court administration and approve, and that's really what it would be sitting on right now. I, I don't want to bother um, Kinley right now until they're reopened and operational. And I think it's kind of silly what they're making us do, but they are, once they're operational and they have the plan in place, all approaching again. But I, I'm, I'm afraid that if I touch it too soon, it's gonna lead with a lot of gains.
All right, I think you can motion for adjournment. Motion for adjournment, send me some motion to adjournment.
Second, Mr. George second's it. Thank you, council. All of the fair side. I propose a no.